... United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move in favor. Second? All the favor.
Do you want to just skip right to what's first on the agenda and talk about anything else that needs or...
Yeah Barney Baker is first, he's with GEI Consultants, and he's going to update us on the, on his findings from Sabino Landing.
Your work is yours.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are all these people here for this presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And is one of you a computer expert? I'm having a little problem getting my screen to come up.
It should be, I think it's a function in this screen. Are you going right into the presentation? Are you going right into the presentation?
I was going to.
I'm just going to move my camera then. One more. Yeah, go back one. One PC, how do you get up to PC?
Yes, yes, they told us we saw them.
Okay.
Wait, there was, you see in the form that's on?
This one?
The four dash three, that's on it. Using the... Video.
Are you in the coffee?
I think the other source is probably where it should be. It's maybe VGA.
You want VGA?
This is a VGA, that was VGA.
Projector mode, hold on.
VGA.
Not PC, you're in, you're in PC, right?
That should work. Let me try to turn this down and start again. Just kind of fix it every time.
I'll fix that when you're done.
Okay. Sorry about this.
Yes, that's the VGA, that's...
I think it's got A and a B, this is usually what I use. It's like a control.
Different color, that's promising. Wait, 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 searching S, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Do you have another computer?
Let's try it. Hold on. Yep.
So, if you guys can't figure it out, a lot of people have it on their phones because I sent it out earlier so they can...
Can you share?
Okay, here we go.
You can share? Can you share?
Oh, yes.
And we have a function. Okay.
So, good evening, everybody. My name's Barney Baker, I'm a professional movie maker, no, just kidding. I'm a civil engineer and I was retained by the... Initially by the town of Harpswell and then together with the towns of West Bath and Phippsburg, they created a cohort and you can see, not very well, very dark slide, but this is where the Sabino Landing is, this is One Acre Wharf in Phippsburg, and this is Garrison Cove in Harpswell. And the three communities are, got a grant from the, from GoPiff to study these sites to basically prepare them for, improve their resiliency and prepare them for the future. So, tonight, our presentation, we've worked with Christine, and this is really a kind of a kickoff meeting for the general public. But just to talk about the partners that have contributed to your grant, obviously the town has contributed some money to the, to the project, but the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and the Future has contributed some funds. The New England Environmental Finance Center is a stakeholder, as is the Casco Bay Estuary Partnership. And this presentation tonight and the follow-up comments that I receive will be shared with the partners, first with Christine and then with each of the partners and the other communities. So you're the first community that I've come back to talk to with anything substantive. And actually their final partner is the Maine Climate Council, that is an initiative by the Governor to look at the resiliency of sites within the state. And this is their website address at the bottom of this slide. But this, this publication is just a wealth of information. They do things like plot and plan for sea level rise, climate change, that sort of thing. So just, these are your community cohorts again. And the GEI team, GEI is a civil engineering company based in Portland, and we have a waterfront group there. I'm a project manager, and these are the other people that are working on the team. So what is the purpose of this project? Well, we are looking at three sites to make them more resilient with respect to climate change and sea level rise, and we're also working with community stakeholders to investigate and develop resiliency measures and adaptation strategies. So, what does that mean? Well, for Sabino, it means taking what is currently not working particularly well and trying to make it better. We'll talk specifically about your site. This is the timeline, in January we were awarded the project, February, March, where we created a flood model and also did our background research. And so now we're, we're into just really getting started on evaluating what the solutions might be. This is, these are the, the kind of the benchmarks that we've completed so far. We had a stakeholder meeting on January 13th, of which a lot of you that are in the, in the audience now, I think, attended or, or have noticed for. We did a site reconnaissance. Actually, that was, that was, the site meeting was on June, January 26th. We did a drone flight. In the case of Sabino, the drone flight was not as successful as it was on the other sides because there's so many trees there. And now we're, we're in the position of giving something of a progress report, but by no means have been finished the, finished the project, we're just really getting started. So this is your site right here, and again, all the trees, but... What you have here is, this is not dead low tide, so you can't really see the extent of the intertidal area here. Tucked up into the cove is a very steep ramp, and that comes down to a flatter section on the beach. And it's a, you can see the neighborhood setting. From a resiliency perspective, this site is very stable. I think I've got it on some sort of timer. The site is very stable, you can see it's got a rocky shore, and the fact that the boat ramp is very steep means that sea level rise is not going to be a big factor on this site. For this cottage, though, sea level rise is obviously a concern.
We know.
But what a lovely setting and obviously one that is not able to be reproduced. So very unique. So, this is the tax map U22, and it shows the, all the parcels out here, so the site's been fairly well developed. There are some larger parcels, but all the smaller homes, smaller parcels, each have properties on them. And Sabino Road itself, as far as I can tell, it's only 20 feet wide right of way. So you can see this is a, I think this is more like a 66-foot right of way, maybe not that large, but Sabino's only 20 feet. And it goes down to this cove, so it's traditionally been used as a boat launch site. And I think Monty's going to talk about one of these parcels after I'm finished. So Monty, we can use this, this map again if we need to. So this is the zoning for the area. The hatched area is shoreline zone, so shoreline zone is, has all sorts of state regulatory requirements. It's actually administered by the town, but the zoning or the ordinance is created by the state. There's a state model ordinance, which I believe West Bath has adapted, adopted. And so then we have what's called high density shoreline, that's, those are the smaller parcels that are in the projects area. And then we have what's called rural residential. So you've got a real mix of property, sort of rules or ordinances within the town of West Bath. So here, here are the land use ordinance, I looked, you know, through the ordinance and, and made notes on what the requirements were. And then the other thing that popped up was the waterways and harbors ordinance. That's basically, this is a typo here, that, that really just considers moorings. I thought it would handle the ramps as well, but it really just seems to deal with moorings. What else did we look at? We looked at your comprehensive plan, and that turned out to be a wealth of information. That was done in 2005. And so Sabino Landing comes up in the vision statement. Existing town boat landings will be enhanced in a neighbor respecting way to also function as many satellite parks with sufficient parking to accommodate normal use. These will include Bow Rock Sabino and New Birch Point Mini Park. And so it features in several locations of the comprehensive plan. In marine resources, it indicates that, does a tally on the, on the available parking, and Sabino has no parking lot. And, and we realize that people currently park along the road. And they calls out that additional parking at Sabino Cove is desired. Then it comes under recreation space. Timeframe for implementation, this is a good one. So this was under midterm, which I think was five years out, so we're past that point. But this is a problem where, or this particular site, the town has been looking at it for a while, and, and for good reason. It's a, it's a beautiful site, and it's got great potential, and it's used by a lot of different, different people. So, I did have one. So what are the issues on the site? And I think maybe, I had a slide, yeah, here it is, wanted to go through this one first. Who are the users of the site? And I think if I don't, if I miss a use, and people here know what that is, please speak up. But obviously there are commercial fishermen that use the facility, shellfish harvesters typically use it at low water, and because of the lack of parking, often, as I understand it, I haven't actually witnessed this, but their vehicles are sometimes on the intertidal area, and they also collect their skips and deposit them with trailers. So they're users of the facility, and I think they're the best ones that are able to use that steep ramp. And then the other uses are the neighborhood residents. We looked at the number of lots in that area, they use it for boat launching, kayaks, seasonal dock installation, this was reported at our, at our onsite meeting. And then there's, there's also, I guess included in these residents are people who own property out on one of the islands, and so this is a kind of a staging area for them to get out to their island property. And then there's the, the public use, because it is a public ramp, but because of the limited, its use is limited by parking. And as I understand it, based on talking with folks at our site meeting, enforcement may be needed to prevent some unsafe and nuisance parking. So I think there's a, the theme here on this site, and that's why we're talking about solutions, but the issues are landslide congestion. There's very limited space for vehicle turning, in fact, you're, you're turning in a, in a public road essentially that is, goes out to Sabino and then turns on to the other road called something Reach, I believe.
Close Reach.
Yes, there you go, thank you. And so there's not really, it's poor, it's poor space for vehicle parking and trailers in addition to the turning movements that are required. Then there's the intertidal congestion, where there are unattended vehicles are left at low tide and may inhibit folks that are also trying to use the facility. If there's vehicles at the bottom, it's, it's difficult to, to navigate around them. And then of course, having vehicles on the, on the intertidal resource is, is an impact that if there's any fuel, fuel spill or, or oil or anything, typically you're not, not encouraged to, to have vehicles in an, in an intertidal area because of the impact to the resource, fragile resource. And don't forget, one of our partners is the Casco Bay Estuary Partnership, so I'm sure they'll have something to say about that also. So the boat ramp itself, from an engineering perspective, what we did was we, we flew the site and we were able to generate contours on the property, so we know, we can determine how steep the road is, we can look at the alignment, but the ramp is, is too steep. It's, it's rate of descent and abrupt descent, it's, it's very difficult to back a trailer down it because the trailer suddenly disappears from your rearview mirror and you can't, can't see where, where it's gone until you get the car over the, over the hill as well. So the, it's, and it's, it's very steep, it's really too steep for a boat ramp. Typically a boat ramp is at 15% max. The other thing about it is it's not a straight shot, so you know, having to back down a very steep ramp and then also turn a corner is quite difficult. And because it's so narrow, you can already launch one boat at a time, so...
What is a traditional ramp? What is that ramp? If it's not 15% for the incline, what do you think the Sabino ramp is?
This is about, this is 20% and greater. And you can see I've got a, I've got a drawing that kind of shows, shows what that is. So I, I think I've captured what the issues are at the site, but you know, please stick up if you, if you think that there's another one, or if I've left something out. We've been through the uses. So what are the solutions? So it's easy to, to, you know, do the Monday morning quarterback and indicate what the desired outcome is, but then having to shoehorn it into a site is, is more difficult. But, so we'll start with the big picture. So I, I think the solution is dedicated parking. Ideally, it would be in an off-site lot. And I know, I think Monty's going to talk about that afterwards. The other opportunity is to widen Sabino Road. I kind of show parking on our plan, and what I've done is I've, I've put it on the side of the road that's away from the houses that are up close to the road. That seemed to be the best place to put it. And the other thing is to define the ramp surface, to, so reduce the grade to 15%, which is a more normal boat ramp. To, so reduce the grade to fifteen percent, which is a, a more normal boat ramp. Put in concrete planks below high water. That's kind of a resiliency thing to, to make the surface more resilient. Hot top is not a, not resilient when it gets wet and dries, and particularly in the winter, because it's quite a porous material. The concrete planks are hold up better and drain better. It's very important to straighten the alignment, because if you're backing down, it's very difficult to turn a corner while you're backing down, and it's hard enough to keep it straight. And then I think a solution, and what I've shown on the drawing to show you what it would look like, is where it goes down the chute or the approach, there's not really an opportunity to widen because of the close proximity of the property lines and also the, the grade. You'd be cutting into rock to do that. So, but you could widen it down on the beach. And if you widen the ramp on the beach, that, I think, would give more room to folks that are, are launching at the same time. Or one, one might be coming in and collecting their boats, and another launching. Or a fisherman might be there and needing to coordinate his catch or his, his, his working rig. So, yeah. So I think this is kind of a repeat of the, of the things above. Moorings. If, if a couple of moorings were added, and possibly some of the, the heavier users of the facility, I keep mentioning fishermen, but there, there probably other, others, island residents or, or other people. But if, if folks kept their boat on a mooring, then even if it was just for the week, or for the weekend or something, it would stop the number of movements, daily movements to get down and, and launch. So whether that would be a, a good idea or not, it would mean that people could leave their trailers at home. So the other solution that's needed down there is, it kind of comes off the page here, but enforcement. And so how does that work? Maybe, maybe there, there needs to be some sort of sticker or permit issued for the folks that could use it. So because where this is a, it's, one of the things we need to look at is sea level rise and what the impact would be on your ramp with sea level rise. And I said very quickly earlier that it really is not going to make that much difference. Actually, sea level rise is, in some respects, is going to improve the situation, because you're going to get more water in the cove. But in terms of, because your ramp, you start the ramp at a very high elevation. If we look at chart elevation, for example, chart is based on mean low water equals zero. You're, you're twenty-five feet higher than mean low, low water when you're, when you're just starting down the ramp. So the base flood elevation, for example, is at thirteen point eight. So you're ten feet above the base flood elevation, which is what the commonly referred to as a hundred-year flood elevation. So this, there's a probability of, of one in a hundred that you get a, a flood occurring in any given year that is, achieves the base flood. So, and then I look at FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, publishes stillwater elevations and looks at water criteria. And Maine Climate Council has indicated in their guide that you should plan for a sea level rise of two point four feet by 2070. And you should be prepared to work with a sea level rise of five feet by 2070. So that's, that's a big, that's a big gain, just in approximately fifty years. But the good news is, for Sabino, this isn't the case for the other sites. For Sabino, a sea level rise of even five feet is not going to impact your ability to use this ramp. It's just going to push the water level up higher. So. So there, there it is again, that's your landing. Here's a shot at it. Again, not quite low tide, and looking the other way. So you can see how steep that ramp is. So what I'll show you quickly is what I thought would work for a possible solution, and this is really just a, you know, suggested. It's not intended to be, not intended to be a solution, and I certainly don't want to offend anybody by suggesting improvements down there. But we have to start somewhere, so that's what we're doing. Okay, so what have we got? So this is essentially your site right now. So what we did was we removed all the trees, and we put contours on the, on the ground. So we also showed the tax map information. And unfortunately, the tax map doesn't line up real well with Sabino Road. So what you're seeing here is the actual road, and then the tax map is off, which is quite common. They still haven't gotten to the point where all the tax maps line up with the property lines correctly. But you can see, coming down Sabino Road, the road does widen at this location here, and this is where traditionally people park now, along this road. And you can see that the boat ramp, it's kind of headed towards the point. Right now, it's not really lined up with the deep water here. So what I'm suggesting is, probably looks like a very aggressive program, but what, what this does is it looks at the changing, that, you can see how steep the ramp is now. This is the steepness of the ramp coming down. This is the, these are lined up on each other. So this, this turning area here, the complements of all those roads, is actually the top of this, this area here. So this is where people are turning around right now, and then starting to back down the ramp. And you can see how steep it is on the, on this drawing. And what I propose to do is to make the gradient shallower and more easily managed, and more, more traditional launch ramp grade. It's, it's the appropriate grade, if you have a trailer behind your car, that you're, when you back down into the water, that trailer is gonna, that boat is gonna start floating on the trailer before your wheels, or before your car is, hits the saltwater, which is the idea, right? You want to be able to back down to the water and have your boat floating, or starting to float, so that you can get your boat off without submerging your vehicle. So fifteen percent will achieve that. And then these lines here, this top line is the high water. Top line is high water. So what we propose to do is we, we pave it down to close to high water. And then this is the low water line here. Actually, that's not correct. This is the high water line here, I apologize. This is high water line here, low water line is at the bottom of the ramp. And then we have the, the highest annual tide, and then we have the base flood elevation. So you can see you're still well, well above that, starting. So I hope I'm not confusing people, but basically, make this grade fifteen percent all the way down would get you to the point where you could launch a boat in, except for just a couple hours either, either side of low water. And what I've done is currently, the width at the top of the ramp is about twelve feet right now. So that's, that's wide enough for one vehicle. And what I've done is you could continue that down and just keep the boat ramp planks at twelve feet, and just keep everything, you know, one long, twelve foot wide. But what I've done is I, I've made it wider at the base when you get out into the cove, so that you could actually, two vehicles could pass at the bottom, I hear. Or, you know, if someone was working and getting ready, their boat ready to go in, it just creates more space down at the bottom of the ramp. And then, of course, what this is adjacent to it is stone armoring to, you know, support the sides of the ramp. So what this, what this does, what this configuration does is, it does unfortunately impact quite a large area of the intertidal area down there. But what it also does, vehicles will not be able to drive off the ramp. It would keep vehicles to, to the boat ramp area, because it would be too steep for them to drive off onto the beach. So what I haven't shown here, that you can maybe get in, would be wide enough as a, like a pedestrian walkway to go down alongside the ramp, and then maybe come and feed down onto the beach, so the pedestrians can come down here. And, you know, if you had a kayak, for example, you could wheel it down with a small trailer and, and launch it, and we might want to put a, a space for a small trailer, or try and figure out where you could have a kayak rack for, to store kayaks down there. So that's pretty much all I have to say. I can take questions.
Can I just ask a question? So the dark area, what is that representing there?
Can I have anyone that wants to speak introduce themselves?
Oh, yes. I'm Suzanne Frigillani. We live in the Old cottage, John and I, both of us. But is that supposed, I don't know what, why it's darker, is it supposed to be pavement, or?
So it's, it's just supposed to show where the travel areas are. It would be definitely paved from the top of the ramp down. The, but the, the existing road surface, what would probably be better shown is, so as not to confuse you, it's just to show the, the part of the ramp that is being improved.
And more, I was more curious about all this back here.
Yeah, that's, that's where your existing roadway is.
Driver's direct turn.
Driver.
Yeah, the existing driver.
Well, because this, like, Close Reach is technically a primary road.
Yeah.
So that looks like you're making a road well into that area. I could be wrong. I think that's the way I see it.
I, well, so what I, what I directed my, my team to do is figure out how you're going to turn a, a boat around, turn around here. And so what, what we're doing is we're, we're driving onto Close Reach, which I'm sure happens now, and then we're backing around and down the ramp.
So why would, if someone owns that property, why would you want to increase that traffic?
Yeah, so...
Brian Frigillani?
Yeah. I think that's a, that's a good point.
Being polite as it is now, I don't see why we'd want to increase that. I spent several thousand dollars a couple of years ago and repaid it in my driveway so other people could use it.
So the, the, the intention of this drawing is to show the limits of the road as it's being used now?
Michael, will you?
If we've gone over that?
I think you need to show turnarounds, meaning it doesn't go on private property.
So, and this, this, this property line right here?
No, the edge of the road, all of that private, that's all private, which is the point that my neighbor's made.
So, and your, your, the point you've made is, is an excellent one. We're, we're, we haven't surveyed the, the existing property lines down there. And that's, that's something that needs to be done. We're, we're not going to do it in our, in our scope of work. We just had the tax map to deal with, and how the existing area is used right now.
Well, I was out there the day that your drawing was, and I marked a corner of their property line with a flag.
Okay.
And I asked your team to put it on the drawing, and it wasn't done. So it gets very easy, and there, there are two stakes that Monty knows well, that's at the bottom of the ramp.
Yeah.
Clearly show the edges of things. It would be extremely simple to add if you're wrong.
Well, maybe, maybe you can help me. Before we go away, I've got a couple of plans here to show me where those are.
Monty's and other neighbors here know where all this stuff is.
Yeah.
So another question with regards to that, and I'm Tim Pearson, and I'm on the Close Reach as well. What's the obligation of a town to inform the abutters? In this case, myself, these folks, Steve Katz, that this, although in planning stage, is a plan. It's in a public format right now. It's been released on the internet, and the town never approached any of us.
Yeah, so...
So what's, what's that? You know, that's, that's, I don't like that. That should all be transparent. It wasn't. It was a surprise to me today that this has been circulated on the internet. The first sniff I got of it was today, when I saw it, and it came as a big surprise. You have an obligation to landowners to notify them of exactly what this is. It wasn't done.
I reached out to the people who attended the site visit, and...
Doesn't look like any of it.
Yeah, well...
It doesn't.
I did not, well, we were there that day. We were there too. And we left both of our emails addresses. We did not get, we got a notice that there was a meeting tonight, but that's all we got. There was no attachment, nothing to review.
I didn't have attachments at the time. Barney just sent them to me.
So I, I just sprung this on Christine. This is, this is not intended, and I, I tried to make that clear as we started. And we can send a note out on the internet if you like, or maybe post this plan and just say "concept", and, and then record the comments that we receive. I mean, it's, it's a starting point. It's not intended to be...
Well, maybe somebody should have thought that through.
The point taken, and I take responsibility for that.
I mean, my feeling is this, with regards to the program. I know it's been there for a long time, and it wasn't always as publicly used from what I've heard from historical perspective, from neighbors around us.
Yeah.
But the reality is, as you mentioned, that street is very narrow coming in. Why we would want to expand it into a larger thing when there's not adequate parking, and there's not really the width, and there's already so many people living on small lots down there, right next to the water that we're trying to protect for the future, makes no sense to me on some level. But I am from California, so I'm kind of crazy.
So, no, great point. So I, I did go back and look at your comprehensive plan. So clearly, there's, there's, on some level, and, and maybe, maybe it would help if Monty was allowed to show us what his plan, or what you're thinking. Would that be appropriate to do now? Because they should, I think it sort of completes the conversation.
You should ask the board to take the grant.
Yeah.
I have a question, noting that this isn't fully engineered, and it's not even a plan at this point.
Yeah. Yeah.
What, what would you estimate the cost of just doing the improvement on the landing itself? We won't even talk about yet what, the difference between what's been done, when people purchased their property, what was, as opposed to what was existing when they did, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
What would be the cost of doing the upgrade along the sides and the improvement of the slope? We won't even talk about what happened.
And ballpark, maybe.
I mean, you don't, we don't know what the costs are going to be and how many years it would take to actually complete this thing. But as of today, what approximately would the cost be?
So I'm going to dodge the question, but I, just to point out that, so something like a boat ramp for like public access, there are a lot of options for grants to do something like this. So when you ask how much is this going to cost, the answer could be how much is it going to cost the town to do it? Because there are grant opportunities to help support that. And those are, you know, generally matching grants, so the town puts so much in and then it gets matched. And here, you have several things going on. It's, this facility serves the working waterfront. The shellfishermen that use it are kind of an important aspect of the town and the state economy. It's used by the local residents and townsfolk. So. The cost of a similar facility in Potts Harbor, I think, was about eighty thousand five years ago. It's probably double that now. So somewhere, somewhere south of two hundred thousand would probably be what it costs to do something like this.
The town's cost, presuming?
No, the entire cost for the facility. So that if you got a fifty percent match, it would be half of that. So it would be, town's cost would be, you know, conceivably, you know, eighty to a hundred thousand or something like this.
I have a copy of questions. I'm Phyllis Harris, and these folks are among our neighbors and our friends who live further away, so arguably we don't have the dog in this fight. I'm looking at this, and this is a question really to be able to select on. In my opinion, this is a conversation that should have transpired fifty, seventy years ago. This train has left the station, okay? You can talk about how much it would cost, you can talk about the Corps of Engineers and whether we can fill or whether we can do that, but the fact of the matter is is the neighborhood is established. To try and build this as an effective boat ramp for an ever-increasing group of users does not seem feasible to me. What plans do you have to investigate whether this is even viable? What obligation do we have as a town to maintain this program? And don't infer anything from my question. Are we really going to help the fishermen? People need to make a living. But I'm looking at the situation and I'm saying, you need this much space and you got this much. Do we have an obligation to do this? What are we doing to look at alternative solutions? Can I get an answer?
We have just begun to actually study the possibilities, and maybe it shouldn't have been done seventy years ago, but the situation was, the situation was quite different seventy years ago. And, and I think a lot of people did not anticipate the way in which the Sabino summer colony would become a year-round colony. A lot of people never expected that the price of real estate would go up prohibitively for ordinary people on that point, and there have been radical differences in the last twenty-five to thirty years. And the three people who sat on this board for the last twenty-five years have been putting out flyers. There's been very little time for long-term planning. So now we're starting. We're starting late, but we're starting.
So then there's, we're looking at, this is one aspect of what's available to the West Bad community. We're looking at this. We looked at this as a part of a grant that we received to even understand really what the possibility was in the house that we presented. And if you look at some of the pieces that were represented in here, we have, every boat launch has something, but not, not one of them has everything. Bull Rock has parking for thirty cars, but it has a tidal restraint on what you can get in and out based upon the rock ledge. Sabino has good launching, zero parking. And, you know, so there's other things, you know, that we have to look at as a community. There's been no commitments made on anything. This was really part of a study from that perspective. I can't imagine that, you know, we're going to take people's property to make parking on. That's not up to me, but you, we're not, I don't think they're looking at acquiring your land to do that from that perspective. I know, I can hear your concerns, but it's not, it's not up to us. We have to look into the possibility. And there's going to be a cost associated with it and whether the town wants to move forward with that, but we decided at a town meeting. We don't make a decision for the whole town like that. We rate an opportunity, we present it, it gets voted upon at a town meeting.
I think Suzanne, in two thousand and five, there was a long-term plan, right?
It was a long-term plan.
Yeah. I mean, you, and I wasn't clear. I'm not discouraging. What was, I'm not looking for somebody who's blinding up your sale.
Well, and there's.
We are where we are. How do we move forward?
Well, and there's, and there's one piece, and it's, you know, ironically, the town owns twenty-seven acres on the waterfront up the river. You know, and one of the things they talked about was, you know, when you look at a comp plan about a kayak portage, that may be something that, you know, we consider on a different part. I don't know, there's so many things that we have that we have to evaluate, the whole picture. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, I'm looking here at the current tax map, and tax maps are usually rather fictional. But for this area, in the current tax map, all these properties down in this area go right to the twelve-foot road. So all the shaded area, according to the tax map, which may be wrong, is on private property. So therefore, I think before these shaded areas are presented to the public, a detailed survey should be done so that people's properties are not assumed that they're going to be taken by eminent domain or whatever it is.
That just wasn't part of the scope of this particular project. And we have to make the scope of this project public.
Yes, but my feeling is you need to do this before you do what you're doing right now.
I just want, Michael Williams, I just want to second that. I mean, you, that a skilled surveyor on a field was part of your team. You surveyed part of this area already. You surveyed through the sketch of one of the adjoining apartments. It seems to me that what Mr. Paris is saying is absolutely key. It's an underpinning to an accurate study. If you're drawing and you don't know where the land is, it's fictitious. And this is a cost that the town may, should bear to support the work of these climate engineers. They need to know, it's unclear, for example, what the actual right-of-way of Sabino Road is. And your town, literally, you say it's two and a half block. You say it was twenty feet. That's more than a twenty-fifth difference. So knowing what the roadway width is, as Mr. Paris said, where the property lines are, a cornerstone for them to be able to work. And the marks are all out there because a bunch of folks have been researching where the marks were over the past few weeks.
So I think that's, that point has been taken, and that's a great point. We shouldn't have shown any of the shade up from the ramp. That really is not part of the project and it wasn't intended. It was just to clearly show where we had demarcated what, how the site is being used right now. And you can see that on this plan. That's the essence of the shaded area. It just kind of fills those areas in. So I apologize for that, and I, I don't want to stop, you know, comments in that regard, but I don't want to take away from what it, the other thing that we're trying to do is get people to articulate how it's used and maybe what they want to see down there. Because I think the property lines, I agree, they're very, very important, but they're not, they're not necessarily going to define what people want to do down there. And what might be possible?
Well, I think there's two people, two families in the community, those that live on, I should say, two locations, Close Reach and Seal Cove, are receiving the predominant turnaround on their private property and damaging their property. I think we talked about that at the last meeting. And so there's certain things that we need to do to protect their investments and make sure that we're not acquiring or utilizing land that has not been granted.
Yeah.
And that's a key component that I think is important to the community.
Yeah, I'm Christine Senna, and we, Brad and I live at Seal Cove, and we own the property since nineteen eighty-six. And we, on numerous times, had to pave part of the town road because in the wintertime it's icy and runoff isn't, isn't dealt with properly. Brad's digging out the culverts, you know, there's a whole drainage issue there that should be addressed before you're even addressing this program that maybe the D E P or the Corps of Engineers won't even allow because it's a lot of resources that you're covering up. And I don't know if we spent any time contacting, you know, the permitting authorities to see if it's possible from their perspective.
So it's, we specialize in waterfront work, so what we're proposing is, we think it is possible, but it would, it would take an endorsement, you know, by the town to be able to do something like that. Waterfront is a difficult commodity. There's actually a shortage of public access locations in the state, and there really is no such thing as an ideal site. And again, the way I started this meeting tonight, I, I thought I apologized in advance. I didn't mean to offend anybody by assuming anything. I was just looking at, you know, what would work down there for the, for all the uses that are there. So I guess I'd like to hear comments on the plan that maybe go beyond the property line impacts. I get that, and I've noted that. And clearly, I need to put those property lines on the plan so that we can, you know, have the conversation and see what those impacts are. Yes?
I'm Tony Vogel, a place on the island. And just had a question, do we know the width between the property lines on the ramp area? Do we know? I know.
We just know the physical, the physical extremities between the cut there.
But, I mean, do we actually know the distance? I know you said it as a survey yet, but do you know the distance between, say, the pins left and right from the?
I know on my page, yes, I'm not sure.
Right. And you know it on that side too.
Yeah.
But I don't know what the width is there.
Right, but you know.
It's not much more than, it's there. It's basically in the rock wall.
Unless you took.
Well, it's.
So, I mean, you can see from our survey where those walls fall.
Okay, the pin on the northerly side is above the rock wall. It's up top.
Okay.
And, but I'm curious what the actual distance is. I think it's more than twelve feet, but I don't know.
Yeah, Monty, I took a rough measurement.
Oh, good.
Somewhere around thirty-five to forty feet.
Wow.
Between the pins.
Across the road. Wow, okay. And by the way, I do agree, you know, with you on the survey thing and whatnot, that's cool, but the, I just want to add one thing to that steepness of the ramp, regardless of all the other things that are valid that I've heard here, but that steepness is a bear. I launched a homemade pontoon boat the other day, and my wife had a hole in the rope, and she's not smart enough to let go. And.
Are you still talking?
The catch on the ridge, let go, and that's him, but we took off. It's hairy, so yeah, I'd like to see something done with the steepness of the ramp, nothing else.
I mean, I think that's dangerous. I've seen, I mean, my bedroom window's right there.
They won't allow it to be up on the roof.
Yeah, but beyond our own boat, and I've seen many people who have issues on there that is like, I'm just like.
And then people get called at night to go call people out because they can't make it up the ramp.
Totally number people out.
Because they're in danger of the tide coming in.
Well, the seaweed, no, they can't make it in because seaweed and whatever, they were just going to drag us. And they don't have four-wheel drive, without four-wheel, forget.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we want to hear from everybody. Who's telling them they can talk?
We're just pointing. Yes.
So I'm Deborah Jordan Pearson, I live on Close Reach as well, and I'm very interested in the improvements on the ramp. But before we even go there, help me to understand how that can be a consideration when there is no turnaround. So I'm, it feels to me like we're missing the conversation that has to happen first.
Well, we, I mean, we defined the edges of the road that are there now using the aerial, using our drone. So the piece that we're missing is we did not, we don't know exactly where the property lines are. But we've defined how it's being used now. It's a boat ramp now, so.
But people are using, excuse me.
Our driveway.
Yeah, they're coming onto high property, both Seal Cove and Close Reach as well. There is no way to turn anything without doing that. So it's been, you know, people have just done that. I mean, because there's no other way. So how do you get it? I mean, if, you know, walls were up, people couldn't do that, right?
This is, this is, just by way of history, the town attempted to get parking back in two thousand and five. They did so because they had access to some grant money at that point, which would have improved the launch. So I was approached, and I owned everything south of the launch. And I was approached and asked if.
Were you thinking on this side?
Yep, if we would, and there's, and there's parking now, which is now these folks' driveway.
Yeah.
If we would offer up some parking at that point. I said, well, we can talk about it. How would I be compensated for that? They said, no, you wouldn't be compensated, but if you offered the parking, we could then enhance the launch. I said, well, then how does that, how would that benefit me? If now we're going to double or triple the people that are going to use it because you've enhanced it? They kind of put their hands up. So not too long after that, I was approached again with the same plea from the town and the same offer of nothing, for me to grant parking. So seventeen years later, we're still going through this, and it all, it's all about parking. And it has, nothing has changed.
Right.
Nothing at all has changed. So, and if, and if you're looking at off-site or down-the-road parking, will that be uncompensated too, or will that be a different offer at this point? So suddenly, you have some money to pay for property, but in two thousand and five, it wasn't available.
Yeah.
So I'm just a little. So, I'm, I'm just a little confused.
Well, probably, uh, unfortunately, I, I think if people had gone back and looked at the same decision, uh, it might be different.
So, Mike says his hammer is, and then Monty, we'd like to hear-
So, David Hesse has a point that he wanted to make a while ago.
I'll hold it right now.
Okay. Michael?
I, I just to add to what Debbie said, uh, all of those regional issues, uh, bear in mind. I mean, probably, uh, you need an engineer to turn around, um, across the property. But if you're designing most ramps that I've used or seen, you also have to think about a queue facility.
A what? Queue?
When, because as people are coming in, they need a holding area while somebody's going down. And your current plans don't make any provisions for that, don't show any, any dimensional areas. I used to review plans for a living, so I'm sorry, but a couple of other things. Your, your parking spaces look like they're parking spaces without trailers. Ninety percent of the folks that park there are using trails. You might look at a section that will allow a finger peer in the future on your riprap on the side of the concrete planks. If you're not going to do that much damage down in the, in the resource area, you might need provision for the future for that. You need to look at sanitary facilities that aren't shown anywhere on, on the, the plan. And I want to repeat something, that's a quote of another neighbor who's currently president of our Sabina Association. He made the point at the meeting, which seems to have been lost here, that it's not just the width of the road right at the landing. What he pointed out is because these boat lanes are wide, the entire length of Sabina Road is too narrow to support an airboat that's over eight feet wide and fuel truck on the other lane. Uh, so, we have a problem, again, to, back to Deborah and Dennis' point, enhancing the use of something that the community does not set up to support. The infrastructure of the roadway is not there. So, you said wide Sabina Road, that's wide Sabina Road from start to the end.
So, I think that was also in the comprehensive plan. And I think some of that work may have been done. Is that right?
Nothing got into Sabina, it was done-
Not, nothing's been wide, there was not-
That, that was also in the comprehensive plan.
And, and that's also all being rewritten and re-looked at this year as well. Monty, we'd love to hear what your thoughts are.
Ready for that?
Want me to put the tax map up?
Um, yes, please. And I've got another AutoCAD drawing that I should put on there. You don't have, uh-
Do you have a U S P?
No.
Email?
Uh, it's AutoCAD and I, I have the drawing, but I was thinking you had a projection email. Okay. Can you, with that, can you expand the lot? Uh, in other words, zoom in on it?
Yeah.
I could take a picture of your map and then we could email it to the computer or something.
Okay, so-
Actually, I think probably if you zoom in on that, you know.
So, did you want me to zoom in on that?
If you can, yeah.
Whereabouts is your, your property?
It's twenty-eight, that guy right there.
Is that some question?
Yeah. Okay, uh, we just, uh, Roy and I just closed on property yesterday. It's block twenty-eight, that guy right there. Now, it's Deb Layton's property. And, uh, I've been watching that for about fifteen years and finally got it. And basically, I wanted to provide it. Some of this might be a moot point now anyway, but, uh, wanted to explain. Uh, I intend to carve out an area twenty-eight feet wide by about seventy-five feet deep for a right-of-way for myself and then resell the property. Okay, um, then over that with Steve Rayno and, uh, you know, the town and whatnot to see, am I doing the right thing? Knows this is going to be okay with everybody. But, see if I can use this pointer here.
Right of where we did it, it's block twenty-nine?
Twenty-eight. Did you twenty-eight or twenty-nine?
Twenty-eight. Uh, twenty-nine was sold at the start of the year from Solomon Gomez. Good guy. Um, okay, so I'm going to try to outline the area that I'm going to keep. Right here, okay. This is about two hundred and thirty feet from high water. And there's a house currently right about here, very close to the road. This is a non-conforming lot, as is this one, meaning, uh, today you'd never be able to build on it. That way it's too small, et cetera. Um, a house that's there is in pretty poor shape. It can be rebuilt and grown thirty percent. Um, so, I have options here. I could, uh, save this right-of-way for myself and resell the lot. Uh, I could run it out, but I don't want to do that. Too old, not interested. Uh, it could be turned into a parking area by the town. But there's, uh, some priorities I have here. One is I don't want to, uh, disappoint the neighbors. That's priority one. And, uh, uh, let's see, well, there's another one I, another idea I had waking up a couple of mornings ago. Personally, I am deaf on oyster farms. Hate them. If you want to talk to me about it later, I'd be glad to. But if this did go with the town for parking or whatnot, there'd have to be some stipulation that not one goddamn oyster farm is going to use that parking lot. That's going to be tough to do. And that might destroy this whole thing. I didn't think of it until two days ago. But, uh, that's my feeling and I'm stuck with it. Okay. If, uh, there can be some creative thinking for a way that maybe I could retain ownership somehow but not, uh, actually own it. Legally, I'd own it or whatever, but I'd have the rules and whatnot so the town doesn't get in this thing where, uh, you know, I'm sure you can't say you can use it, you can't, that kind of thing. But I could. Um, just, just a thought. But anyway, uh, I'm afraid that's going to kill the whole thing for you. But it's still a faint possibility.
So, I'm curious, neighbors, what are your, if he were to do that, what are your thoughts about having that turned into a, a piece of that as a parking lot?
Let's go back to square one. You can add as much parking as we possibly want. It's physically impossible to launch a boat on that ramp without driving into my driveway to call up here Seal Cove.
What if they, it's a couple hundred feet, but you could turn here and back up.
Okay, I've got that thought. Well, that on a cut-in launch.
I'd do it, but not at a light-
You're a professional, uh, and I'm sure that the clam guys could do it, but for most people who have-
Boy, when you don't use the backing up-
They're not used to doing it.
The toughest part is actually when you get to the launch, like you say, it's, uh, it's a little tough, um, for somebody who's new to it. The rest of it isn't that bad.
I really don't like the idea of a parking lot, right?
I'm just, that's why I'm trying to ask questions.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it clearly is going to change the ambiance of walking down the road, in my opinion.
Deb, you heard your hand up?
Boy, I was just trying to visualize the, um, scenario where somebody turns into Layton's property or your property and they back back. What about all the cars? I mean, we just heard-
Well, there wouldn't be any cars.
So, so would have to somehow be monitored, that there could not be any further parking-
Thank you, I should have mentioned that. The whole idea is, and, and that's the good side of a parking area. It would eliminate by edict, uh, no more parking on the road, period. Okay, it would be illegal. Uh, so that is the good side for you. But I understand the bad side, and so I'm all ears and so-
Well, there's more bad side. If, if you, again, if you offer all the parking in the world and it satisfies the parking problem, okay, and then they, the launch gets improved. So, the usage is going to go up a ton. So, as it is, and it happens over and over again with little use of a launch, but more and more, we have to wait to get out of our own driveway. So, that's going to become an increasing problem. And I'm not-
I think we got our answer.
Well, that's what we're trying to hear with your feedback.
Yep.
My, my concern is, as I started to say, I mean, right now it's restricted parking. It's supposed to be by permit only, right? And if you look at how many of those cars have permitted parking, you do. I mean, people who, some of the people have permits, but the majority don't have permits. So, and it's not enforced. So, I guess my concern is-
I mean, somebody-
It's great to say no further parking on the road. However, how is that going to be enforced?
Well, right now, there's no signs or anything. I mean, uh, and I'm not going to argue, you know, for against, I'm just two cents.
Somebody had a question over here. I don't know who. Jack?
In regards to parking on the road, I have to have with me a nineteen eighty-nine tax map. And it shows, starting that, uh, a hundred, and I'm approximating it, if Sabina Road approaching the town landing is twenty-four feet wide, it narrows to twelve at the top of the landing. So, that's just something of historical interest, that the lowest hundred and fifty feet or the most westerly a hundred and fifty feet of the road is much more narrow than the average width.
Okay, uh, but can I ask you, Barney, that we, we've been told we got thirty-five feet between property lines there.
Yeah, that's what, that's what gentlemen said.
That sounds like, you know, if that were improved, that would be a turnaround area, sorry, thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet where though? At the top of the ramp?
No, at the, at the bottom. Again, that's, that's-
Just at the bottom?
Yeah, just at the bottom.
Okay, so that's not thirty-five feet up at the top?
No.
Oh, that's, I didn't understand that. That's what I'm asking.
No, but it's, you know, until the line is surveyed-
So, it spreads out as you go down the ramp?
Maybe.
Monty?
I'm curious.
Monty? Can you move a little bit away from the camera, please?
I think the one thing I'd like to say about the parking lot is, um, well, I'm coming back to before, uh, like when Madeline had the property there and nobody was around in the winter except for us and kids would come down and party and whatnot. And we would call the, you know, the sheriff's office, but nobody would come. Once in a while they'd come. You know, we don't have a lot of security, so if we have a parking area, you know, parking areas attract people hanging out in their cars and kids or whatever. So, it would, if you had a parking area, it'd need more enforcement to keep loitering or-
Yeah, it could turn into another Pickle Park, huh?
Yeah.
Mike?
I'd say this with due respect, the only way that this would work in my view is if it was done in a comprehensive way and the town invested fully in all the components that the state is making for. And that includes three items we've talked about today. And it seems to me, we, we're not able even to maintain that section of road. It's a little bit falling apart. We don't have the confidence that that kind of comprehensive action can be funded and implemented in a way that will make it work in this town. And so I think we're better off. We've ended the way it is. We're trying to work out some of the headaches that the median neighbors are dealing with.
Well, we do have a twenty-seven acre parcel on the water that we could sell, the town owns, to fund that. Do we not?
Mike, would you be willing to make a ramp less steep though?
There might be some opposition to that.
No, I, I think anything, Monty, my, my view, anything that increases the use of the ramp, which that would do, exacerbates the problems in the land soon.
I'm not sure I would agree with that one. Everything else I did, but I, I don't know if decreasing the steepness would really change someone's opinion of whether they're going to launch it or not.
I mean, frankly, I don't think a lot of the folks with the big airboats, they have to park in your new lot. Well, plus they'll still park them a lot. They'll park on the lot and ramp them down below.
They can't.
I think you should-
They can't, but nobody's going to force it, not even-
No, no, I mean physically, they can't, right? I understand.
Well, I don't know, you're double wide, you can put one on one side, but a couple.
I think we need not to make assumptions about what other people will or will not do in circumstances that we do not already have.
I think we can learn from the past about what's likely in the future.
I think you can also reasonably expect some people's behavior to change if the circumstances of their lives are improved. And those, the guys who do shellfish harvesting in town are just as concerned about the situation down there perhaps as you are. Please don't make assumption about our neighbors.
I just wanted to, I mean, this, there is a sign down there, by the way, about parking right now. And it says, "No parking overnight at the boat ramp." And I've been here all week and every morning at about three A M., which is still night, in my opinion. Between three and four, the clam boats show up and he sits down there and he will idle for, literally, I mean, idle, gas running in this time of five liters a gallon for over an hour. It's fumes, fumes, who knows what on the sand right down there, which I think is of great concern environmentally. And that's, you know, what we would like to, and this is in conjunction to this, I know it's a separate topic, but I think the town really needs to address that for an environmental concern in general. Because I think, you know, the state is pretty stringent on this type of thing. Christine, nice seeing you, Hannah, over there.
My head, that's Brad Smith. Uh, it seems to me that the, you have to understand that the, the rigs that are being used there by the clambers, particularly airboats, are large rigs. And it's, so it's almost like if the smaller rigs are there, they're not as big of an issue when they're parking and when they're backing down. You still have the issue of the turnaround. You'll always have the issue of the turnaround. But maybe this landing is just getting, um, it's too small for what it's being used for. And maybe we should be looking at other options within the town, if there are any. I'd love to hear more about this twenty-seven acres on the water, to really kind of rethink. And, you know, because this would make like a good place for people to put their tie exit. You know, that's where they could maybe be along the side of the road and they could use the existing ramp because you can basically carry your tie exit down. But maybe that's more of the size of the vessel that should be using that ramp.
Well, we also have Bull Rock. There's every, each location provides a piece of the solution, not the solution. Bull Rock has enough parking for, I, I believe it was quarter of thirty vehicles. But it's, it's very title dependent.
Right.
Um, so I, I don't, I don't know what the solution is. Um, and it's, you know, certainly going to take research. I don't know what the solution is. I don't, I don't know.
I just want, I just wanted to go on record that I'm pro working waterfront.
You too, except for oyster farms. I guess I'm done.
And I do as well, but I'm also pro environment for not messing up what we have left on this plan. And I as well, but I'm also pro environment for not messing up what we have left on this planet, which is getting worse on a daily basis. And parking in the tidal waters is not helping.
Have you taken the time to define what you consider to be the scope of capability to acquire from a boat ramp?
When you subi things, things cost a lot of money, the first thing we did is define scope of order specifications. What is it that we want to acquire? And you figure out first what you need, not what your concerns are, but what do we need. And because my concern is, in looking at the Sabina solution, as much as we would like to make it work, I'm not sure that's feasible, but possibly there are other areas within the town. And first off, what do we really need? We need parking, we need a turnaround place, we need a peeling place. We need the ability probably to launch and retrieve, perhaps simultaneously, launch and retrieve, I'm not sure. I mean, I'm thinking about Sawyer Park and some of the other town landings that are nearby. And quite frankly, their acreage is huge. It'd be wonderful if we had that option at Sabina, I'm not sure we do. But have you defined what we want in a boat ramp? And what we absolutely need? That's usually where you start when you're going to go buy something. What do I need? And you don't go at it with blue sky, the sky's the limit, no, what do we really need? And who are we trying to serve? Not just the people in the town of West Bath with their kayaks, but if we really want to support our local fishermen, and I think most of us do, what does that mean? Because I'm afraid we're going at this, uh, cutting the dog's tail off an inch at a time. And I'm using that very painful analogy very deliberately. Because if it's not one problem, it's another. Why don't we step back and find out what we need? And then what money have, can we get to study this more comprehensively and figure out what we're going to do?
I just want to add one other little thing that became obvious to me just recently in the time of year that they're putting in boat floats for people's docks and such. And it seems there's been a move now where they actually haul the floats out and take them down the road and take them to your house or something. But I've seen very large floats going down that ramp and scraping, you know, they were scraping at the top, it was steep, and they were talking back and forth. And, you know, that's an additional use now, and I know when, maybe twenty years ago, they kind of approved the ramp, and it's been improved a little more by various people, but when we first came, it was like logs and dirt, and it was like a nightmare even putting a thirteen-foot whaler in there. And, you know, not many people used it then, so as you improve it, you're going to have more commercial use. And who knows, there might be boat tours that put their boats in there, you know, there's a lot of potential that you open up when you make a really big, bigger and better thing, so just other aspects of commercial use that's happening right now and has improved over the last five, ten years.
Isn't that fancy, occasionally a kayak float is built, or they're multi-kayak float.
So I think I'm going to propose that we move on, we appreciate your comments. And we have some homework to do, we all do, we need to, we need to see what our options are and what potential next steps are. We're not there, we're, this is the beginning phase. And we value your opinions and and want to continue to hear from you.
And so Sam, I just wanted to say, um, the twenty-seven acre property, I don't know where it is, but I'm wondering if we just don't look at any of these little improvements on places that aren't right and look at
It's, it's.